Congratulations to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Dear Lord, thank you for this beautiful day in Canton. Please grant us the wisdom and vision devoted this evening, always keeping in mind the best interests of our citizens. When this meeting is over, may we all be proud of our work here tonight, in your name we pray.
Welcome our guests and visitors here tonight, and we have one special visitor from the Red Cross, and we have a proclamation that we'd like to read and present to them. This is Andy McSwan for the Red Cross. Our proclamation says, "The American Red Cross helps nearly thirteen hundred disaster-stricken families each year in Metro Atlanta, provides twenty-four hour support to members of the military, veterans and their families, collects and distributes blood for patients at hospitals, and annually trains twenty-seven thousand of our neighbors in first aid, water safety, and other life-saving skills. Whereas the Red Cross has been helping Metro Atlanta for a hundred years, Red Cross heroes are on the front lines in local communities every day, volunteering their time, giving blood, taking life-saving courses, and providing financial donations to help those in need. And whereas the Red Cross is not a government agency and relies on donations of time, money, and blood to do its work. And whereas March is a month dedicated to all those everyday heroes who join the Red Cross mission to prevent and alleviate human suffering in the face of emergencies. And whereas in its centennial year, the Metro Atlanta Red Cross is celebrating our community and all the work we make possible with our support. Now therefore, I, Gene, have been there at Canton by virtue of the authority vested in me, do hereby proclaim March two thousand and fourteen as American Red Cross Month. I encourage all citizens to support this organization and its humanitarian mission." Thank you.
As a proud Red Cross staff member and also a Canton citizen, I am very excited to receive this proclamation, particularly this year because we're celebrating our centennial in Georgia, not nationally, but Georgia's Red Cross has been providing services to our citizens for a hundred years this March. So we just want to thank all of the heroes in Canton who do supply their time, money, and their blood. Metro Atlanta relies on the Red Cross, and the Red Cross relies on its citizens in order to provide support for our five key areas of mission. And there are two that most people know, we call them blood and flood, that's what most people think of when they think of Red Cross. And that's our disaster relief and preparedness and our blood services, but there are three more that a lot of people don't know that we do. And that's our service to the armed forces, our international services, and then health and safety, where we train others how to save a life in emergency situations. So there's lots of different ways that Canton can continue to partner with the American Red Cross, and we invite you to do so as we celebrate our centennial. And here's to another hundred years of services in Canton. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Congratulations. Okay, I will entertain a motion to consider the approval of the agenda.
I'd like to amend the agenda possible under counsel added items to recognize the local business.
Under counsel interviews.
Also, I would like to move item E under all business to first, to the A, please.
Just the?
Just the.
To the A. May I make sure I get that right? Oh, we get there.
I'll hope you remember.
Okay, please, please. Any other changes that you've requested yet? Okay, now I entertain a motion to approve the agenda as amended. A motion, second. All the favors signed by the saying aye. Aye, opposed no. All members voted for the motion. In your package, you also have the minutes of the March sixth, two thousand and fourteen meeting, and also the minutes from the public hearing of March sixth. Are there any changes or corrections to be made to those? If not, I'll entertain a motion to approve the minutes as written. Have a motion, second. All those in favor, signify the saying aye. Aye, opposed no. All members voting for the motion. Okay. Now we will have our ten-minute public input, and we have three individuals signed up. Spencer Hicks.
Good evening. My name is Spencer Hicks. I'm a citizen of Canton. I'm a husband and a father of three children. I'm also a pastor in the city of Canton and a business owner of Reformation Brewery located in Cherokee County. I'm just here to give my public support of any and all ordinance changes necessary to bring your growler store to our city. And I also want to encourage the city to not merely change ordinances, and think, you know, that this is just a great favor to small businesses, but that the city would become more proactive in supporting and helping small businesses open in Canton, and specifically businesses in historic downtown Canton. As many of you know, in today's new economy, the challenges of opening any small business are numerous and very expensive. And those challenges, they're only amplified when it comes to opening a small business in a historic district. You know, historic districts, they add another level of obstacles, in part because of the ever-increasing codes and regulations that seem to increase year after year with the size and scope of government. Small businesses are often met with, "You can't do that here," instead of, "Let's find a real solution to doing that here." And my hope is that Canton would become a small-business-friendly city, that the politics of fear and shame and guilt that really easily play on the pages of news stories would finally subside. Our community, it needs small businesses to thrive and to add real value to our lives together. And Canton is a beautiful story. I'm a fifth-generation Cherokee County resident and family, but Canton is a story that is bigger and really more beautiful than any one of us. It is a long and historical narrative, and that is really to be celebrated because it is beautiful. But that narrative, it isn't just for posterity's sake, it isn't just in the past. That narrative is begging us as a community and as a city to give it new life. And we, as a community, working together, we're given the privilege and opportunity to breathe new life. And I simply encourage you, our elected officials and leaders, who I deeply appreciate for your service that you give, but I encourage you to take the bold step, the bold step as leaders, of all leaders, to serve the least of us, to work for us and with us, and to get, together, we can write new chapters in this story that we've been blessed with as a city. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Jim Stoudt.
Thank you. My name is Jim Stoudt. I'm also a resident of Canton, and I'm also going to be speaking about the growler ordinance, which was very eloquently stated earlier. I don't think I'll be that eloquent, but I'll give it a try. What I'd like to do is I'd like to just kind of ask a series of questions that have been brought up in the past meetings, and just kind of give our comments to those questions. So what is the purpose of the growler ordinance? In our opinion, I said promote, excuse me, promote the downtown Canton as a destination for Cherokee County. And a growler shop has been a proven way to be an effective business that brings additional traffic to a downtown area and fulfill that purpose. So why limit it to downtown? Why limit it to the historical area of Canton? That's a good question. Well, if the purpose is to focus, to build a better downtown, and you want businesses to come to downtown, then you need to provide an environment that brings people in and also leads a business to have a chance of success. Because, and if you're concerned about the unfairness to other areas of the city, I mean, many municipalities actually have different zoning and tax advantages for certain areas of town to bring businesses to those areas. In our opinion, that this, the limitation to the historical downtown area is similar to that for the growler ordinance. And so if it's not limited to downtown historic, the business decision to migrate to where higher traffic areas, like a shopping center or downtown, will miss another opportunity for future growth. So if we build it, will they come? We observed the popularity of the growler shops in smaller cities such as Woodstock and Flowery Branch. In fact, Flowery Branch actually had lines outside their store with people waiting to get their growlers built. Growler shops have demonstrated to attract visitors due to their novelty, a specialized product offering, and a very loyal beer culture. Growler shops do become a destination point for those who seek specialty shops and tend to support other local businesses in the area. So once they're there, they tend to go out and support restaurants and other shops. And so we're enthusiastic about this, and we're ready to support it, and we're urging you to pass the ordinance as it is ready to be. Thanks.
Thank you. Lane Wood.
Hello, ladies and gentlemen. I'm Lane Wood, and I'm here first about water bill remediation for the Victory Garden, but I want to expound on what the two gentlemen just spoke about here. Four weeks ago, I was at the Georgia Convention and Visitors Bureau conference, and the growler company, Flowery Branch, was the sponsor of our evening entertainment. And he told me, I got struck up a conversation with him because I told him this was going to be on our agenda, and we're hoping to pass a bill to get this going on for downtown Canton. And he said that he had been hands-on involved with Flowery Branch downtown revitalization and was looking to expand. And I took his business card, and I hope it got into the right hands. I think it did.
He came to our last meeting.
Good, okay. I've been out of town at Tennessee now, but I'm back, y'all's been warned. So, at least for a couple of minutes. But it was a great revitalization effort for Flowery Branch. They're a positive influence. And I've just been recently appointed to the Tourism Committee, and I'm looking forward to serving on that. But you have to have a reason to bring visitors here. And destination drinking, I mean, it's not really destination drinking. It's a reason to come downtown, it's come to our events, it's to spend money in the shops that are open, it's to eat at the restaurants. And it just does give a really good vibe to a downtown, and it does help with revitalization. So I hope that y'all pass this ordinance and just get on with bringing Canton up to the 21st century. It'd be awesome. Why I'm speaking now, that I've got that two cents the other way, I am also the garden manager for the Canton Victory Garden East. And in November, on the sixteenth, it was brought to my attention that I had a leak up there. And my water bill in November was fourteen dollars and seventy-three cents. And we thought we had the leak fixed. We're not real sure where it is. The November bill was nineteen dollars, which wasn't too far out of the ordinary. December's was forty-nine dollars, January's was sixty-four dollars, and February's was ninety-two dollars. And we run this garden strictly on donations and on dues, and this pretty much spikes out my budget. So I'm looking for any and all help and remediation in this. I don't know what else I need to do other than beg so we can keep this garden going. It's a great place. If you guys haven't been out there, it's somewhere where you can come out and have a picnic because it is open to the public. Just close the gate, keep the deer out. But any help would be appreciated. Thanks, guys.
Thank you. In fact, this is on our agenda later on, and we hopefully will.
And release is up for renewal too, so longer ahead of it.
He's gonna look at it. He thinks it automatically. But we'll talk about that in the other deals that are on the agenda there. Hopefully give you some relief there. Okay, that's all we have on the get-go period. Under our consent agenda, we have the, we have three items, the action on the city auction list, we have the action on urban redevelopment plan resolution of need, and the action to change a worker's compensation agent of record to Insurance Office of America. Does anyone want any of those pulled for further discussion? If not, I'll entertain a motion that we approve the consent agenda as provided. Have a motion, have a second. Any other discussion? If not, those in favor, signify the saying aye. Aye, opposed no. All members voting for the motion. Okay, under all business, we had E moved up to A, so that we are discussing the second reading and action on the ordinance to allow retail sales of growlers, provide for wine shops, eliminate floor space requirements, and provide for ancillary tasting licenses for beer and wine tasting. Mr. Cummings, do you have any comments?
No, Sandy, Mr. McGurk is gonna move this. I'll pass the floor to her.
Okay.
I have no discussion on it. I think it's well-written, and we need to pass it.
Is that a motion to approve?
The motion passed the, excuse me, make the motion to pass the ordinance as written.
Okay, we have a motion, we have a second. Have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? Let's go.
Again, you know, I've had mixed motions on this whole ordinance. The first question is whether or not we should allow growlers in a reduced space, and I'm totally in favor of that. Then I looked at the second issue where we limited to the historic district. And I can see the objective of trying to foster downtown and bring people to that destination point. But on the other hand, it goes against my concept of business, is that if we allow a business to be within the city and then tie that business owner's hands, we may restrict the business from coming here or locating at all. So I'm torn between these two conflicting. I concluded, or I went into several other parts of it. And I looked at it downtown. The parking issue where premium parking is available will be an issue for a growler. A growler, the person is going to come in, want to fill their, have their bottle filled, and they want to leave. That was stated in the last public meeting, on the last meeting, or the prior work session. Are they gonna want to walk two blocks to get their growler filled? The second thing that came to mind is the purpose of the growler purchase is for primarily a small party or an individual consumption at home, and that they would be buying ancillary products. And those ancillary products would not be necessarily adjacent to a growler located in the historic district. For example, if I'm gonna be watching my football game tomorrow and I'm buying a growler, I'm gonna buy the growler, I'm gonna be buying chips and dips or whatever else that I'm gonna have ancillary. So that means I'm gonna be making a stop at one of the supermarkets to acquire the product. Recognizing that, it might defeat the purpose of the growler because if I go to the supermarket first, I may say, "I don't want to fight the traffic or the parking issue that I might have downtown." So I'll pick up my premium imported beer or six-pack at Publix or Prober or Engels or whatever supermarket. So they may lose business because of substitution of that six-pack or whatever they wanted to bring, get. I don't view it as keeping the people downtown because it is a destination. It's an in-and-out. It's going to be on a list of stops that they're gonna make. They may stop at the dry cleaners, go on, stop at the growlers, pick up their growlers, go to the supermarket, and then head home. So I don't see it as bringing shoppers to town, but bringing maybe purchases into town. And in discussing with one of the, well, not actually one of the parties that spoke, but one of the related parties that spoke, that if it were citywide, they felt their success would be greater in a location other than downtown. In other words, we're limiting, we could be limiting the success of that business by putting it in the historic district. We know it will only be a destination business. There'll be no impulse buying. There'll be no walking, typically walking by. typically walking buy as they do in their other shopping and see that business and necessarily go in there and impulse buy or impulse try the product. So, my preference would be to limit this to, or not limit this to the historic district, but allow this ordinance citywide. Thank you.
Mr. Russ, I believe his name.
You know, I share the mixed feelings of Mr. Cummings on this issue because I'm very much in favor of growlers. I just, we all hung up on the restriction to the historic district for a number of reasons. The gentleman that just spoke, I think, is one of the people that might be considering opening a growler. And he used one word that caught my attention, which was a chance of success. I would rather not have a chance of success. I'd like to move it to a certainty. And the person that's gonna put their money down, I would like to have the greatest certainty of success possible. I just read an article about the 120 most admired brands in the world. And the thing that struck me is that 12 of them are within the city of Canton. Several of those 12 have multiple locations. The fact that someone might locate outside the historic district and be successful doesn't preclude them or exclude them from opening a second growler in downtown Canton. I think over time, I would rather have somebody making money and being successful in Canton and using the profits rather than somebody that's struggling in a downtown location. My personal feeling, as much as I support the Main Street, I think a growler in downtown Canton might be more successful as we evolve to more shops and more reasons for people to be in downtown and make the impulse buy. That's the initial buy for a growler is impulse. The follow-on buy is I like what I bought. I'm coming back. Then it becomes a destination. But I really think we might be more successful if we let the people with the money make the decision. We are not those people. We're not the ones that are gonna fund a growler store. Give them the maximum freedom to make the best possible decision to make money in Canton, and that's what I would like to support. So, I really wanna see a growler ordinance. I'd really rather not see it restricted.
Mr. Hough?
Thank you. I'll say starting is that I'm for bringing a growler store to the city of Canton. But with that said, I do, as the two previous speakers have said, that there are some reservations. And I do share the concern about the parking situation, that being a destination, I see this with Mid-City Pharmacy where people come in just to get a prescription. And he struggles. He really struggles trying to service his customers just to come to get a prescription. So, I agree with Mr. Russ that the success, I wanna see it be successful. And with that said, with the somewhat, I gotta be careful so I don't offend anybody, a somewhat limited number of locations and the rent that is being asked from, I think, one individual who controls most of those locations would probably be an area that needs to be addressed in order to do it because the build-out or the codes, in order to put a business in there, there's a lot of work that needs to be done in these few locations that are left. So, again, it goes back to, we wanna see a business that comes in and is successful. I do agree that I don't feel that we should limit this to the downtown area. If there were some other alteration of the motion, I surely would like to hear it because I believe I could support some other alterations that might do the same thing. But right now, I do have some concerns about the success of the business.
Mr. Grant?
I just wanted to state that we do have someone, Canton citizens, who are willing to take the business risk. We can ensure anyone's success. That is their decision. They wanna open a growler store. While my understanding in speaking to these individuals is that while they realize that they could possibly be more successful in a high-traffic area, they wanna open it in downtown. They believe in downtown. They believe in downtown's future. They're willing to put up the investment. And I don't know why we should restrict them. We can always expand this area if we have requests or needs in the future. Right now, we don't. But I'm happy that we have people willing to invest in downtown Canton. We, growlers have opened across the nation. I think all the ones that I'm aware of in Georgia are opening in downtown districts and have been a big part, as someone mentioned, of those revitalization of those towns. I think the people coming in, I think growlers, you know, they are a destination. I think for the most part, the people who frequent them do so after hours. I think where parking is less of an issue. And I think that we can't, while we can't say that, hey, they're gonna, the growlers are the last stop before they head home, they also have the option to come into town, have dinner, to buy coffee, shop at Beloved, to shop at Keith's Jewelry, to shop at Chamber House, and pick up the growler and go home. So, I don't think we should discount that. As far as limiting areas where business can operate, we currently have restrictions on certain businesses. We're restricting tattoo parlors, and rightly so, from operating in downtown Canton while we're letting them operate in South Canton. And I think that's, having character zones for businesses is perfectly okay. The national brands and successful ones do penalize high traffic. But those national brands and our shopping centers are backed by national developers who pour, you know, millions of dollars in advertising support for those companies and their tenants. All that our downtown tenants have is the city to support them. So, I think we should leave it up to individuals who are willing to invest in our downtown to make this decision. And I think we can always expand the area if we need to in the future. And I believe Canton, growlers being a specialty business, can only, at this time, support one. So, why not have it in our downtown area and we can expand it later? And the other question I have as far as citywide, do we really want to drop those floor space requirements for package sales citywide and possibly have, you know, package stores, other things that aren't growler especially and craft and well-controlled throughout the city? But again, we have Canton citizens who are willing to invest in this business. They want to invest in downtown. I see no problem with us approving this ordinance as it's written and into downtown. We can always expand it in the future. I understand, I think we're all on, it's a win-win for everyone if we approve this as written, so.
I've never actually seen this issue as about beer. It's never been about beer to me at all. It's been about helping our downtown become revitalized. And, you know, it's not, it's not up to us to decide whether a business is gonna succeed or fail. A person has a right for his business to fail. He's got a right to give it a shot, to try, whatever it is. And I think the advantage would be not only by protecting that individual or business by being in downtown, by not allowing it throughout the entire city. That would help them win. That would help them be successful, I think. And certainly downtown is gonna be successful anytime we can have something. I don't care if it's just a destination or if it's, I can see where people would leave restaurants, in fact. And there's a lot of people here at night at these restaurants. They could leave, go by there, pick it up, take it home, have it for the next Saturday football game or whatever. But I think that, you know, we have to give our downtown advantages in order for it to ever succeed. Because if we don't, everybody's gonna go out to the interstate. They're gonna go out there. And Canton, you know, is gonna continue to kind of dry up. We may get some more antique shops here. I don't know. You know, at one time, that's about all it was here. And it hadn't been all that long ago. But we've got a pretty good diverse group of businesses here now and are getting more. I think that if you just opened it up citywide, downtown loses. Downtown loses. And the development of downtown loses.
Bill, I know you didn't mean this, what you said, you said if we, if we, I don't know why we'd wanna restrict them, meaning the people that would come in. I know you didn't mean that because you really want to restrict them to only be investing in downtown Canton. And you said it to the first, but I understand what you're trying to do. Here's one thought that I have is that if there's somebody ready to open in downtown Canton and we pass it citywide, do you really think they're gonna trepidate and not open, delay their opening, and then somebody's gonna jump up and go out to the Ex-18 or move someplace on Riverstone Parkway? Or if they do open, is somebody gonna immediately jump and compete with them outside? I think the first person that opens a store is the one that's gonna have a tremendous advantage. And that's how you build the market share, in my opinion, so.
Well, we don't have a McDonald's in downtown, do we?
Yes.
We don't have one. And you know what? It's not a high-traffic area yet compared to out near the interstate, Riverstone, Canton Marketplace. Mr. Cummings, I'm sorry. Go ahead.
Mr. Grant made two very interesting points. Number one, he said this city could only support one growler. And the second point that he made is there are people ready, willing, and almost immediately ready to go. If we do it citywide, they have the option of choosing, if they favor downtown, of immediately coming downtown and doing it. And that would restrict any second one, based on Mr. Grant's research, of opening up outside of downtown. If they are really wanting to do that, they'll immediately move forward and open downtown. So, we're not restricting them. On the other hand, they have the option, even if they're ready, willing, and ready to go immediately, they have the option of anywhere in the city. We end up with a growler. Bottom line is. That's my viewpoint.
Anyone else?
Just one point, that if we do open up citywide, I mean, I think you're exactly right. However, if we open up citywide, I do think there's a chance for, there are now companies and companies in Georgia that are opening growler stores in multiple cities, multiple locations, if you wanna say corporate or franchises. Certainly, if we open up citywide, I think we would, could certainly attract more people interested in opening growlers. I would argue that if we do do that, then we quite possibly may be, you know, a local citizen who is ready, willing, and able to open in downtown, may create some competition for them that, you know, unfair or whatever. I think we win if we have a growler open in downtown. The entire city wins. I mean, I think it's think of nomenclature, but I do think the fact that if we can give more support to downtown businesses in our downtown district, we all win in the long run, so.
I see this as a first step of this new council opening Canton up for success. For the Main Street, downtown of any town is the heart of a city. And if you don't have a healthy heartbeat, you cannot feed the extremities of your city. This is a fantastic first step to opening Canton up for a new generation. A new generation of people who want things differently than what were wanted 10 years ago. Canton is severely stuck in the past, and we need to get our heads out of the sand and join the present. And this will feed our Main Street. It will feed our downtown. It will feed our citizens. It will feed our tax base. People are gonna buy product and have sales tax on it. This company is going to have to pay stormwater fees. They're gonna have to pay property tax. We can open it up to the city at a later date if we get a barrage of requests. We've not had a barrage of requests. We've had two or three. We've got four people here tonight, well, represented tonight, who are ready to go on this. They love downtown. They want their business downtown. And we're hogtied them by not passing it. And if we need to redo it in the future, we all know that we can.
Mr. Mayor, may I address Ms. McGruder?
Ms. McGruder, the individuals that are proposing to open up, are they in a position to, if we were to pass this tonight, are they in a position where they would sign a lease and they know that they have C codes to meet in the build-out, the cost of build-out in a business? Are they in that position to start ASAP?
They have been looking at properties and they are aware of what needs to be done and they're ready to do it.
So, if in, say, three to four months, would that give them, you think, time to go through with their opening up a store?
That question I couldn't possibly answer because I can't see the future. I have no idea what.
But you've had discussions with them?
I've had limited discussion.
Ms. Russ?
I just wanna clarify one point. I think if you really look at it, and if business is more successful outside of downtown Canton, they will pay more taxes and they will pay stormwater fees. Downtown Canton, businesses typically don't pay much stormwater because their impervious surface is the street where the people park on the public street. And I'm pretty sure stormwater fees don't apply to parking spaces in front of any of the businesses in Canton.
You know, actually, from what I understand, in Flowery Branch, the gentleman that was here last week, and I spoke with him personally on the phone before he came, not only do they restrict it to that area, but they also restrict the number of businesses they can have within a certain area. So, that business is somewhat protected, you know? So, I mean, I think it's a matter of question of whether or not we really have a vision of trying to do anything about downtown because that's the first and it's a very minor step. I mean, it's not gonna create a business that's just gonna bring thousands of people in every weekend. It's gonna be, I suspect, I suspect fairly small amount of traffic actually in and out of there, which makes downtown even a pretty good place to be because it has not much traffic. It doesn't create a lot of problems there. But I think that, you know, it, to me, it's about, you know, if we really have downtown at heart and want to see it, this is the kind of decision that we have to make, I think. And it won't be just about this in the future. There'll be other things. We give, we give certain incentives for businesses coming downtown. We've given, you know, an office building there, certain incentives. We try to do things that will help downtown. I mean, Jack knows as well as I do. I mean, downtown had suffered and has come a long way in the last few short years, I think. And I don't wanna see that, I don't wanna see that slowed down, Mr. Hough.
Yes, thank you. What I was kind of searching for, and Mr. Cummings, I don't wanna steal your thunder, but if we put some type of timeline on it, I want the growler, I want a growler store in the city of Canton. And I would prefer to see it downtown Canton. But if we give three to four months and we don't see any action, or is it gonna come to reality? I don't wanna restrict.
If you, if this group would give six months, I have no problem with that. It should be revisited at that point. Then I wouldn't have a problem with opening it up. If we, if we give it six months to see if we get a growler store, and if we don't have one in six months, I'll say, let's open it up. I'll support opening it up citywide at that point. I don't know if anybody else would or not, but I would. Okay, we do have a motion on the table, by the way. I believe it's been seconded. And so, I guess we should proceed to cast our votes.
Could I request that the motion be revised to include the language like you suggested?
You can request of the person making the motion, I guess. Maybe we accept the change in the motion.
May I direct Mr. Huffman?
Sure.
Do you want it to include language of if we don't have a growler in the process or in the ground in six months?
You are good, Jeff.
I am. It's what I do.
How about issuance of a business license?
Issue of a business license.
Issue of a business license.
And a lease.
And a lease signature.
Lease or bail, the bill.
How about going one step further and saying that if it isn't exactly to those terms, it does open up automatically. We don't have to revisit.
I don't think we, I don't think we should put that in the ordinance because then you would have just too much uncertainty about what was allowed then or not. You just need to come back and amend the ordinance whenever you want.
Is everybody in agreement that we wanna do six months or you wanna do shorter?
Six months, six months I would give anybody plenty of time. We've been a lot, through a lot of years without one. I think six months, if we didn't have one, it wouldn't be too much to ask, I don't think. Mr. Grant?
I was just gonna say, let's don't make this difficult. We have people wanting to open it in downtown. Let's say six months, if there's not action on it, then, you know, we can open it up. Even if we have requests, we may not even have any requests for open, for around the city, but we can do it at that point. I have no problem with the six months. I think these people are interested and determined, and they've been looking at properties in good faith, and we, in good faith, should support them as much as possible.
Let's go.
I have a question, Mr. Dyer. Can we put a clause in the ordinance that it would expire in six months should a business license not be issued?
You probably could. I'd prefer not to. What you have on the books, and then people are gonna, was the license issued or not? Is ordinance still? You just have to take action in six months, one way or the other.
It's gonna be in the minutes, for sure, that we had discussed that, and I think there was a general consensus that if there is not one in six months, it would be revisited. And I think certainly you could do that, and, you know, some of us have made a commitment at that point, that, you know, I think you'd, I think it would be opened up.
The motion could be made at any time, any meeting, to change the ordinance, anytime you want.
The only fear that I have is, is that if we take and do this for six months, there could conceivably be another growler that's looking at us and decline to come here and move on to another place, because there's that six-month limitation. They say, well, we don't know what's gonna happen, and then at the end of six months, we don't have any.
Well, yeah, that's a risk you run, but, you know, I still think it's important to get to one downtown.
I was just gonna say, Len, if they did come and wanted to open outside of Canton, we already have one downtown Canton, I say just keep their name. If they, if they really want the same, less of restriction on the space, floor space, outside of downtown Canton, we're passing an ordinance that allows growler citywide. However, there's a restriction on the space only downtown. I didn't say we were passing, we're voting on, I should say that.
The ordinance allows, growler store allowed anywhere.
Right, exactly. The only thing we're trying to restrict is the space.
Okay, I think it's, we do need to go ahead and vote on this ordinance. It's second reading to allow growler sales, wine shops, limited force, place requirements to provide for accessory tasting licenses for beer and wine tasting. And we have a motion and a second. Those in favor signify by saying aye. Those no? Motion passes. Next item will be second reading and action on the alarm user ordinance. Mr. Cummins, you will go.
The alarm, I motion that we pass the alarm user ordinance with one modification, that the timeframe for measuring violations or false alarms be restated as calendar year, not rolling year.
Okay, that's the motion, we have a second.
Second.
I've got a motion, any other discussion or questions? If not, those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed, no? All members vote for the motion. Second reading and action of the rental car tax ordinance. That ordinance, while it has an immediate effective date in the ordinance, I would suggest that if, that we change that to October 1st, beginning of next fiscal year. Do we have a motion?
A motion to accept the ordinance with a start date of October 1st.
Okay. Do we have a second? Any other questions, Mr. Russ?
I disagree with the start date. If we approve it, I'd just soon start in 30 days. I expressed my opinion the last night.
Yes, you did.
And I don't totally disagree. I'd like to see it started as quick as possible. No, I just, I'm just thinking, for budgeting purposes, it really makes life a lot easier if we can determine revenue flows and budget. In June, we start budget process in June, we have no idea what we're doing until October.
I would hope that we would be able to get some more specific information between now and October, and I think October probably gives, gives everybody plenty of time to gear up for that and know this, though, you know? I understand what you're saying, I understand.
I don't want them to pack up and leave, so we gotta get them quick.
Bill, do you have something?
Yeah, I just wanna mention that, while I would love to start getting, getting the revenue sooner than later, I do think we owe it to the rental car companies to give them time to get those systems in place. I think this would give them one time to, to, you know, to get the systems in place to abide by this ordinance, and so I'm just trying to give them a...
Mr. Huffman?
Well, I address Mr. Rush's concern. The information that we had and was supplied by Enterprise is extremely accurate. I mean, that's a big corporation, they, they track everything, including their revenue, of course. So they were being very open with that. Again, this will be very, a very restrictive type of ordinance. It is gonna be a tax, not a fee. It is a real tax of approximately $160,000 on the citizens of Canton. Now, if they live outside of Canton, then they're not a citizen, but basically, it's gonna be $160,000 of tax, of new tax. So the Hertz organization that put up a sign down in, on Riverstone is gone. I haven't gone in to check and see if they pulled out of their lease or not. They had some in-store signage that would indicate they are coming, but the sign outside is gone. So it's, again, I think we're picking on one kind of, the people there, again, I said, I wanna reiterate that they wanna be a good corporate citizens, and these people are, you can't ask for finer people to have as citizens in a business in our city. They just wanna see the money spent home wisely. And when I say wisely, that $160,000 would get us our fire station that we so desperately need. So the people up in Laurel Canyon and Great Sky, if we do this and pin that money to the fire station, we can have our fire station. Thank you.
Jack?
Yeah, I like the way what Mr. Huffman said, and also, I have a, I still have a problem with this, that all this money really goes back to taxes on citizens and paying them no taxes, no tax increases. We pay enough taxes. We're with our stormwater fee, we, you know, we have senior consumption, and then we raise tax on this. It's just not, I think it's fair.
Mr. Cummins?
Yeah, I was initially against this, but after reading the usages, that you can use the funds for, and one of the uses is for public safety facilities. And what it does, and sitting in the position I am now, changes my viewpoint. Not that we designate this money to anything, because we're gonna bring in a budget, but it gives us expand, for all the different functions that we perform, it gives us expanded capability of where we can utilize different funds. For example, our motel hotel tax revenues are up, and that goes into tourism, which can be construed to be Main Street and conceivably economic development. Instead of using these funds, we may allocate more funds to Main Street, but take them from the motel hotel tax and utilize this excise tax for a public safety building such as a fire station. So looking at it from that perspective, I've switched my viewpoint on the acceptance. If it were to be only so limited that we could only use it in the area that I perceived it to be used in before, I'd still be against it, but since we have a lot of flexibility as to where that money could be used, I changed my position.
Okay. Anyone else? Mr. Russ?
The last time we attempted to pass this and did not, the gentleman from Enterprise was here. And I think the, he had, he almost, was a foregone conclusion to him, I think, that we were gonna pass it. He was a little surprised we did not. And the bottom line is, I think he was just looking for us to be what we're supposed to be anyway, just good stewards of the money that's gonna be collected. And he suggested the fire station, it's obviously a big issue for the city of Canton, still is. And I think we just need to do our job. So we're gonna take the money, we're gonna spend it extremely wisely, and that's all they're asking. And your bookie's correct, that if they're good stewards of, if they're good citizens, they just want us to be good stewards for that money.
I would suspect that once budgets are submitted from the various agencies, that, you know, that maybe the fire service will have a request in there too, just like Main Street, Canton Tourism, and others as well, will probably want some of this money. And so if it can be used for multipurposes, that, that's the time that this board will decide where it goes. And so they have their final decision anyway.
Well, that, Mr. Mayor, that's part of my concern, is that it's easy to pass the tax and collect the money, and all of a sudden, a few months from now, we have a change of heart. And I'm not for that. I'm just not for that. I guess I just, I hate to use the word, I don't have a lot of words in my vocabulary, but I just don't trust the system to where we will spend the money where it needs to be spent. It'll get into the, into the big part of the general fund, and all of a sudden, it's gone. And I'd like to have some type of assurance that this money would be used appropriately. And, well, listen, listen, Main Street is a wonderful program, we got a lot of wonderful programs. We need a sewer plant out here, we've got a lot of needs. And we've addressed one of the things tonight to help Main Street. You know, bringing, bringing a new business down here. It's time that citizens in Great Sky, in Laurel Canyon, get their fire station. And this is gonna be a tax. We filed taxes a year ago, when this council wasn't in the same organization. We filed taxes about fire a year ago. Now, here we are, and you're saying it's one of the most important things that we want, we need, not want, excuse me, need. The difference between a want and a need. And that's where that money should go, and I don't want some type of assurance that it will go there.
Mr. Grant?
I don't think anyone can argue that, that we need the fire station of Laurel Canyon and need to look at our fire services, and I think as Mr. Cummins alluded to, this tax does have a set of places where it could be spent, and public safety is one of them. And so I don't think anyone ever advocated, and if I did, I was misunderstood, that all that money goes to Main Street. But it does give us more money to address the multiple needs that we have, and I think through the budgeting processes when we would do that. And I'm confident that this council will make the right decision, put the money in the right places.
I would like to agree with Mr. Grant, unfortunate Mr. Grant, had been through one of the budgeting systems yet, discussions, and it doesn't always pan out that way. So, yeah, it's an experience, believe me. So, and with that said, we're all, some of us are sitting around and kinda laughing about it. It's true. It's absolutely true.
That's the way it works.
It's the way it works.
And honestly, it does appear to work. Well, it may not, it may not get exactly what you want, or it may not get what Mr. Cummins wanted, it may not get what I want, but in total, we are...
Mr. Mayor, I'm not talking about what I want here, I'm talking about what the citizens up there want. And we've been talking about it since year 2000. It's time to put up, we can do this.
Okay, good.
I see you're agreeing with Mr. Huffman.
Are you feeling okay?
I do agree that this would be a great source of income. It's taxing our citizens, but it's not a $5 million tax that the city would have to pay. And it would go for a really good cause, being able to use that money for trade, economic development, and public safety. I think that's a win-win for everybody.
Well, I think that's exactly what we will decide, you know, when budget time comes.
Well, it depends on everything else, because the state tells us how we have to use it.
Okay.
I think it's win-win.
All right. I believe we have a motion and a second on the table.
Should we have a roll call?
If you want one, I don't know, if you ask the question, I'd say not necessary, we'll see, you know? Those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed, no? I don't think we need a roll call. Okay. Next item, action on quality assurance, quality control review on our wastewater treatment plant design, Mr. Cummins?
I'd like to make a motion that we engage ESI to do a quality assurance, quality control review of the construction documents for our wastewater facility reclamation or improvements project.
Second, I have a motion and a second, any discussion or questions?
Just one, Mr. Russ? Just one question, just, again, the total amount of that?
$30,000.
Okay.
Mr. Russ?
I just wanted to, I'm trying to refresh my memory as to how painful this was for the city, but back two years ago, I think we had a problem with our water services billing. Because of implementation of a new software package that was not quality control back checked, very small amount of money could have been spent to quality control back check that, and caused us enormous headaches as a city, enormous headaches, loss of manpower, hours that were spent to try to fix that, not to mention the fact you had people getting these astronomical bills, $60,000 bills, that were just crazy. And I think, I did the math on this, 30,000 versus 8 million, I think it's less than a half a percent. I don't know if it's very wise to not spend that money. And one thing about a roll call, I would like to have a roll call, so that in the event that this plant doesn't work the way it does, if somebody voted against it and it was defeated, they're gonna answer for it when that fault comes up.
Do you request a roll call, though?
Well, I am requesting a roll call, absolutely, because I wanted to be on the record who did not approve this.
Okay. Mr. Cummins, Mayor?
Going back to Mr. Huffman's, and correct me, Mr. Dyer, I'm wrong, but I believe the object for calling a roll call vote lies with any member of council, does it not?
I think you should have a roll call, because you asked for it.
That's right.
So, should we have? I would like that.
Yeah, but see, the mayor helped me out, he told me to ask him. We won't do that again.
That's it, roll call is fine with me.
Roll call, okay, that's fine, all right. This is action on quality assurance, quality control review.
Yes. Russ?
Yes.
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 Okay, unanimous? Okay, all members voting for the motion?
Why don't we have a roll call?
Yeah, there you go. Okay, on the item D, action on establishment of fire suppression, tap these, Mr. Cummins?
I make a motion that we establish, use a separate fire suppression tap fees.
We have a motion, we have a second.
Second.
All right, and this is effective immediately, right?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Any other discussion or questions? If not, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no? All members voting for the motion. Okay, we did E, I believe. Second reading and action of the ordinance provides for licenses for farmwareries to sell by the package and for consumption on the premises. Mr. Cummins?
I make the motion we adopt the ordinance.
Second.
Have a motion and a second, any other discussion or questions? If not, there's, you have a question? Okay. If not, signify by saying aye. Opposed, no? All members voting for the motion. Okay. All members voting for the motion. Okay. All right, under council introduced items, Mr. Grant had a recognition.
Yes, I just wanted to recognize one of our great downtown merchants, R and M Sandwich Shop, today was our 42nd anniversary. I don't think they're, I don't know if they're here, I invited them, but they had a really, really busy day, so I think they're home, probably resting and celebrating on their own. But 42 years, and as most of you know, they just totally invested more in downtown and renovated the space, just looks great. You can get your 42nd anniversary t-shirt at R and M for $10. I was going to wear it tonight, but I told, I told it'd look stupid on me, so. But just wanted to recognize them and thank them for what they've done for Canton and downtown especially, so.
Absolutely, and you know, they took a chance on downtown a long time ago, and they worked extremely hard, their whole family worked hard, and had made a very successful business there. It's getting more and more successful, seems like. When you're doing that lineup, halfway out the door.
But you remember a year ago, they were in their cars.
I know it.
They offered free horse speed when they first opened up. I rode in, right? 42 years ago, I was one of them.
Okay. The only other item that I have, and no one else has it behind me, I think, is the Dugard East, that water bill, I would like to suggest maybe that we forgive those bills that it is a city property number one, and number two, all they are doing a community service and providing a spot for people to go down and garden. They, the flats are very, lots are very, very cheap, $15, so. Okay, 25, they went in?
25 for new, 20 for renewals.
Oh, okay.
Cover the water bill.
25 per block, Mr. Cummins, so moved. Second, Mr. Rush?
I did, what was the number? I did some math on, Lainey gave the numbers, how much is, how much do we?
Couple hundred bucks, and what is it?
Was it 160?
I didn't do the math, but I can.
Whatever, you want the whole bill forgiven or just the difference between the normal?
Oh, since.
I figured it was about $165, but whatever the number is, I don't care.
Okay, 92, 65, and 15.
Give it all.
Okay, whatever.
Okay. 90, 100, 200, that's right, I had two up.
Whatever, whatever.
All right. All right. $200 for given, all the water bills, how about that?
We give a refund.
Also, the only other, I'm sorry, what did you ask?
I paid all of it, but the one that was forgiven, so, I mean, it's in my name, that's the scary part.
Yeah, I suggest that we do that, refund up to $200.
Sweet, thank you.
That'd help on it. Well, we haven't voted yet. We haven't voted yet. I know, I know, but.
That's so amended.
You can, you can amend it then, okay. We'll have a motion and a second, any other discussion? If not, those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed no. All members voted for the motion.
The mayor, recently there was something out on the dog park and asking that we.
Right. What, what that is, they, that is going to be on our August 3rd, I mean, April 3rd work session, to talk about, you know, whether or not we want to take that over as part of our functions. We, you know, we maintained that area anyway before it became a dog park because it is city property. And of course, it's a little different now, it's got, you know, it has water running there. I'm surprised it didn't freeze first, too, I don't know if it did or not.
Mr. Mayor, could we include your, our discussion about possibly all the dogs in our city parks? You have.
On April 3rd?
Yeah, you want to discuss that?
Yeah, I think we probably ought to at least discuss it and see, see if there's any.
See what the citizens think.
Yeah, I know, I know there'd be some opposition to that, and I think there'd be some support for it, so I don't, you know, it could be.
But we'll get it out there, because it will be same as the dog park.
Yeah, I know, there's been, there's been a lot of interest. I mean, we have the festival, the arts every day, I mean, you look at the number of dogs on leashes walking through that crowd, you know? And so, but anyway, that, that would be a decision. I think we've, we should put that on the agenda as well, right, for 3rd. Start the process. Any other discussion? Okay, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn the executive session to discuss personnel. Have a motion and a second, those in favor?
We're not, we're not closing.
We're coming back out, make a decision.
We might.
We are, we could, conceivably coming out.
There's a, there's a mission.
We can vote in the executive session.
There will be one issue that we'll need to discuss and vote on, yes.
One issue?
Yes.
Okay, well.
I can't drive it until we get there. But I mean, you should be aware of it, it's in your pocket, think about it.
Well, I know, I know what the personnel, I thought, I didn't know what any of it was, I guess there was one.
I know, I know, I don't want to break that.
Okay, okay. All right, we may come back out and make some kind of decision, I don't know.